Good evening, everyone, and thank you all for all coming out tonight for the reenactment of the first town board meeting. But before we have the reenactment, we do have a special guest who has joined us tonight to help kick off the weekend historic celebration of our bicentennial. So I'm honored to introduce to you Congresswoman Soli Belice Stefani. Please welcome her.
Thank you. Well, I am so excited to be here this evening to help celebrate the bicentennial of the town of Wilton. And I want to thank a couple of our local leaders and our civic leaders who spent so much time pulling this weekend together. So first, thank you so much to our town supervisor, Art Johnson, for your leadership and for all you've done. And then I also want to recognize, I also would like to recognize Zuland. Stand up so you can get the credit, you've been working on this for a year. And this is a testament to your hard work. Thank you to all of our civic organizations who are here today, and I'm just excited to be here, and I'm excited to present a congressional resolution which will forevermore be recognized by the US Congress, and I'd like to read it today. Mr. Speaker, I rise today to honor and recognize the town of Wilton as it celebrates its 200th anniversary. The town of Wilton was formally created in 1818, the town of Northumberland, and held its first town meeting in March of 1819 at the former Emerson's Tavern, as we're about to see. Since then, the people of Wilton have worked hard to create a tight-knit community loved by all who live here, which is a testament to today. Wilton has an exciting history and several significant landmarks, including Grant Cottage on top of Mount McGregor, right here, near the table, where you can see as Grant died, and Camp Saratoga, currently part of Wilton Wildlife Preserve and Park. Thank you so much for your commitment to the town. These events are important. This region is steeped in history, and I'm so excited to be a small part of it today. So I'll hand it back to you, Art. Thanks.
Thank you, Congresswoman Stefani. It's great that you could come here tonight, and thanks very much for the invitation. So now it's time we'll get into the reenactment, and I might, our town board members from 1818, 2018, down from up.
Excited about the first town meeting for the Wilton York? Yes, my dear brother, greatly excited. This day has been long in the planning. One year ago, the New York State Legislature created our town from the town of Northumberland. And today is the day we will elect our town officials and begin the governing process. We will make Wilton great. Still, I'm surprised that because there was a dispute about the name of our town, they named us after Wilton, New Hampshire. Yeah, Wilton, New Hampshire. We've come a long way since the skirmish back in 1693, the English and the French fighting over the bird trade. I imagine that one day our grandchildren will refer to that as the Battle of Wilton. Back then, Palmertown was not yet so. The area was just a stopping point on the hunting trails heading north and west. The mills and taverns had not yet been built, and perhaps the beauty of our Palmertown mountains, the fertile lands, and the snowkill providing clear mountain water gave at least one glimpse of what could be considered paradise.
Well, yes, our town certainly is a wonderful place to live. We've already come, we've already had some well-established settlements. The original Palmertown, the Comises, Dimmicks, the Dog's Corners. There are also many newcomers who refer to it as the Wilton Village. I suppose that's where we consider the town business district, because there's a store and several merchants, pet and shops there.
Our neighborhood centered around the tavern, the meeting house, is of course referred to as Emerson's Corners. Our tavern is so conveniently located, the perfect stopping point on the road leading north, south, east, and west. We always have a supply for our horses, and the tamarins can stop, take rest, and then continue on their journey. We do not yet have a shop, but it would be nice to be on Tarville or a train post of some sort. That certainly would be a ace in my book. The meeting house is almost 15 years old now. I still remember when it was being built, 1805.
The Styles Corners, they have their own tavern. That's the area where the skirmish should refer to as the Battle of Wilton happened. I've also heard that as part of the town, they refer to as King's Nation. Boys' Corners is quite so. That's where our good friends, the Dimmicks, live. The roads are already being referred to as Dimmicks' Corners by many people.
Certainly, you cannot overlook South Wilton, the Loudoun area, and their large full district, Seminarian Church. For some reason, I think they could use some more merchants in that area. Seems like one of those big box mercantiles would do well there. Don't you think?
Big box mercantile. I have a tough time imagining how that would feel like. Is that a many boxes? Many things to choose out of many boxes? Or one item that takes up one big box? Either way, it's better perhaps to create a shopping center. Someplace where it's like a partner buggy, you know, and actually stroll along and shop under a, under one pavilion, benches, sit on, rest, perhaps maybe even a cafe, something to have for lunch. That would be a shopping paradise.
The perfect hamlet, I suppose.
Certainly, before the gentleman, I'd like to talk to you a bit about today's elections. As you know, I have no interest in pulling any political decision, and therefore the town supervisors have asked me to run the election. And I'd like to go over what they've issued to me and how to run it. What they've stated is, we'll be electing all the officers, 50 in total. Our town's 50? Fifty. Our town's property owners will meet select individuals for specific positions, and that will be... Yeah, that's pretty much it. There is a lot of discussion about possibly becoming supervisor.
I'm rather confident that I will be nominated for the office of town supervisor. I am the most qualified, and being such a successful businessman and tavern keeper, I'm also certain that we might be meant to fill the other positions necessary to manage our town's business. James, I have confidence that you can do a good job running the election. Everyone knows that the Emerson's are good people, honest people. Art, I hear you're kind of riding. It's time to get the election started.
Well, greetings, William and Peter Saul, James McGregor. It certainly is nice to see a friendly face at this place, and I'd like to give it up to Art.
Why, for Neelius Swartout, James McGregor. Wonderful to see you both. Winter tends to isolate us all just a bit, even from our closer neighbors. Did you feel the world's great breezes today, did you? Did you?
No.
Well, I felt the world's great breezes. And soon the blue movements will be blooming, lovely blue butterflies will be flying all around.
Are agreeing with my good friend.
Yes, the winters can be long, just like this one has been. But now the saps seems to have started to run, and I favor to look forward to many months of pleasant weather. I hope you commit that. My children love fishing along the banks of the snowkill. Of course, their favorite excursion is to lay down south here in Lake Elizabeth. But that's five miles from my home, and we can't get there as often as we wish, so we often settle for Perry's Pond, just a little bit closer. Oh, not to tell you, my wife tells me that she and some of the women folk are planning another festive church social event. These are the type of events that we want to cultivate here in Wilton. William?
Yes?
You know things, and I was wondering what your thoughts are regarding what type of frolic we should include.
Well, for you, listen, I certainly do have a few ideas.
Oh, you have many.
For starters, I've come up with a witty name for the event.
What is it?
I believe it should be called Park Festival. As we hold it on the level of the lawn areas surrounding the church, someday our town should build those real parks for families to enjoy. And perhaps by referring to our summer event as such, will spark an idea into the minds of men like us.
I got you for sure.
My mind, William, I think that's a splendid idea. James, did you see last night that beautiful sunset over the Hamilton Bridge? It was stunning! Before we know it, it was the summer. And we could again hike up to the top to enjoy that exquisite view. It goes on for miles and miles and miles. Just imagine, someone built a beautiful hotel up there.
Well, goodness, that would certainly be something. My son, Duncan McGregor, only 10 years of age, is already talking of moving to the top of the mountain. But of course, he is young and nimble and can run up that mountain like a billy goat.
A billy goat? I can't imagine tourists making that hike up that mountain on a regular basis. I can't get up there. The hike is just too difficult for the average man, and certainly too difficult for a woman to make that trip up there for the purposes of enjoying a vacation.
Perhaps there could one day be a convenience of some sort to take people up the mountain. Palmer Mountain could be made into a lovely place for tourists to visit, mostly for rest if it could break for illness, or in a sadly unthinkable situation if need be, a place to go where one has died. Perhaps the hay that's treated like unlight and handled like them are, as light is slipping away.
Well, well, if you ask me, gentlemen, that mountain would make a good prison, isolated, far enough for proper society, so that a man can make a man's worth of strides.
Good idea. My goodness, William, that is certainly a sobering thought.
I welcome you all here in Emerson's Corners. While we've already made the acquaintance of most of you, for formality's sake, I'll introduce myself. My name is James Emerson, property owner, businessman. I know many of you have traveled quite a ways, some well over six miles, to see today's business, so without hesitation, we'll begin. As you may know, I have been officially recorded by the New York State Records that the town of Northumberland continues west to the northwest corner of Greenfield, easterly to the Northumberland southerly by a westerly continuation of the south bounds of North umberland, and westerly by Greenfield. This decree allows us to process and govern our town. I have been asked by the Saratoga County Board of Supervisors to run this election today. So, for each possession, I will ask you to press for nominations from the floor, and after the nominated positions are called out, each man will voice his vote. Does everybody understand? Very good. Any nominations for the position of town supervisor?
I nominate Dudley Emerson.
Are there any other nominations from the room for the town supervisor's position? All in favor of Dudley Emerson for the position of town supervisor?
Aye.
Excellent. Dudley, do you accept the position of town supervisor?
I do.
Well done. Next position, town clerk. Are there any nominations from the floor?
I nominate the best man for the job, James Delong.
I nominate James Bullard.
I nominate Henry Reynolds.
Very well, gentlemen, we'll have to put this to a vote. Call out your votes when you hear. All in favor of James Delong? All those in favor of James Bullard? All those in favor of Henry Reynolds for the position of town clerk? Resolved. Henry Reynolds, do you accept the position of town clerk? Next position. All those in favor? Congratulations, gentlemen. The election results are final, and you have all been duly appointed to the following positions. I'll read. Dudley Emerson, town supervisor. Henry Reynolds, town clerk. Jason Adams, Benjamin Dimmick, William Comstock, town assessors. William Forbes, Lyons Emerson, William Ingersson, commissioners of highways. James McGregor, James Bullard, overseers of the four. George W. Fish, Cornelius Fonda, John Swartout, Edith Place, Samuel Hope, Thomas Sherman, all inspectors of schools. J. Bez Reed, Selden Emerson, Cornelius Swartout, commissioners of schools. William Forbes, collector. Peter Lang, Edward Avery, Elijah Woodward, Cornelius Voice, constables. Cornelius Swartout, pond master. William Ingersson, J. Bez Reed, James Delong, Jonathan Woodward, Benjamin Dimmick, Jay Swartout, fence viewers. Dudley, I hand the gavel over to you.
Thank you, James. Congratulations, congratulations, gentlemen. This has been a long day. I propose we adjourn for the evening and enjoy a nice meal and spirits provided by my tavern servants. Here, here. Hi, hi. We'll reconvene tomorrow morning. Our agenda will be passing some laws, creating taxes, finding ways to spend those taxes, and putting more salad in positions, meeting adjourned. Cornelius. Put it back, Mr. James McGregor. Henry Reynolds. Gentlemen, this meeting will come to an end. Henry, I trust you'll take the record of the proceedings?
I am honored to be appointed to the position of town clerk, and as such, I will maintain records of all town business.
Gentlemen, let me start off by saying, as assessor, Mr. Comstock must have embarrassed myself of a weighty task ahead of us. We must review each property and evaluate not only the size of the building yourself, but also the acreage. A dislay, we must make note of. Produce relies, heads of cattle, bales of hay, bushels of potatoes and wheat, gallons of cider, and so forth. Our town is rich in agriculture. We have essentially carved a few farming communities out of the forests. Our farmers pay taxes based upon their income, just as the tavern keepers do. I expect that as you determine expenses for town services, we must also have an avenue to pay for these services. For example, if citizens want the town to provide fat power, come and pick up the cow dung. The town must have a way to pay the service, and the workers provide a good service. In the coming weeks, my colleagues on that side will determine the best way to evaluate all profit rates and develop a formula to level a tax that is fair to pattern.
Thank you, Jason. I'm certain there are always been complaints regarding taxes that the town must collect. But in essence, the town spends money, the town must collect money. It's as simple as that. We must be judicious enough with our spending that an unfair burden is not placed on households that do not have a need or a specific service. I'll use the aforementioned cow dung as an example. Not every property owner is in possession of a cow dung, as they may make purchase of their milk from a neighboring farm. To expect every property owner to pay for that service that only a few benefit owners are paying is way unfair.
As an overseer of the four, I would like to speak to that very point. Even though all of us here today are landowners, there are citizens in our town who have not fared as well in life. As we are formalizing our expenditures, I propose that we begin by setting aside an amount to provide for the expenses we may incur in assisting those less fortunate.
James, I'm of like mind as you, but I must point out that there may be taxpayers who would take issue with giving revenue to folks who just don't toil nearly as much.
Henry, I have similar concerns regarding the taxpayer reaction, but there are situations we must consider. Tragic industries or illness that render a man incapable of earning a living, fires that destroy a home, crops that fail. Not everyone who is poor has consciously made that choice. We should not abide from children going hungry in our town. While the church communities within our town provide spiritual support, there still will be situations where monies must be spent. We have taught to love thy neighbor. Again, I appeal to you, our town board, to consider a provision for assistance to our fellow townspeople should they need the rush.
As the newly appointed assessor, and as someone familiar with the country, wealth and generosity of a proportion of our citizens, I believe that setting aside an amount, say $500, to be used specifically as determined by suitable by Mr. Bullard and Mrs. McGregor to approve. All those in favor?
Gentlemen, may we discuss our schools for a moment?
First, Captain, our schools educate the future of our town.
Just a few years ago, in 1812, New York State passed the Common School Act, permitting towns to create school districts as desired. Then, three years later, in 1814, the state made the creation of school districts mandatory. This is a good thing unto itself. However, the funding provided by New York State may not be sufficient to support each school district. We should address today how we plan to fund our five school districts. I believe we have over 300 children learning in these schools. I propose a subscription system, the instituted, where each family with children attending the schools pay a fee. We should have to adjust the fee as more students move into a district, but at least we can be assured of the funds to pay the teacher by slates and chalk, and of course, a dipper for water.
Jason, you have a question? As the newly appointed assessor? Yes, I do. We have just elected six school inspectors. I believe they will review what are chilling or litter, listen to the recitals and such. I'm just, I'm curious, what will we pay these assessors?
Well, the average teacher here at Wilton is being paid the annual salary of $24. Now, before any of the rest of you start complaining about that mighty sum, you must understand, our teachers are well-trained. Some of them have even attended secondary school. We are not running a team school where children learn their letters while the mistress is baking bread. Our schools are on the cutting edge, so to speak. We have thus far had the good fortune to find good teachers, and it is our hope that the sum we pay them will encourage them to stay in our district. Goodness, it would be quite disastrous to give the teacher a year or two experience and then lose them to a larger community, such as a village within the town of Saratoga.
Might you agree that we can't even get teachers, as in the town's best interest? I'll put forth a resolution proposed by Travis to implement the subscription system for our schools. All in favor?
Aye.
Gentlemen, for some ungodly reason, that may be the town townmaster. That means I have to go around the town, find all the stray cows and pigs that are rooting in your gardens, the stray dogs that howl under his window at night, and I have to take care of them until the owner comes and gets them. I have to feed them and house them. Supposedly, when the owner comes, he's supposed to pay them. Rarely does he ever do that. So I think that if I have to collect the animals, I should have the privilege of keeping them or selling them. What say you?
As you know, I'm struck in a little As you know, livestock that are legally allowed to run free are referred to as free commoners. I would like to have a motion that Potts, who was specifically yoked to also be given the status of free commoners. All those in favor?
Aye.
Result. Gentlemen, gentlemen, as Commissioner of the Highway, I would like you to now reconsider a main thoroughfare be constructed, beginning at New York City, if I am pointing in the right direction, and ending at Canadian border, running through the heart of our town, by the rose two or three wagon roads on each side, light being designated for slow-moving car vehicles and the left intended for faster buses and carriages. This magnificent roadway north could be given the honorable name of the Northway and would open our town and grow beyond our wildest dreams all in fairer. Mr. Ingersen, I commend you on your mission. But the motion is denied. Perhaps your proposal may be considered given some future time. And maybe in about 150 years. Is there any new business to be discussed? No response. Well then, I will adjourn this meeting. Gentlemen, thank you for your service today and continuing into the future. May we see more commerce, more schools and more residences being built. I often daydream of a community served by both men and women possessing a magnificent nature. A town filled with healthy, happy children being educated through all levels of school. Parks that provide beauty and recreation for our citizens and businesses that provide both income and service to our town. As we look ahead to the remainder of the 19th century, into the 20th century, and perhaps even borrow off into the 21st century, should the world sustain that long, it is my fervent wish that our new town, Wilton, New York, ever grow and prosper into eternity. Well, my aye. Speaking of the 21st century, let me introduce you to the 21st century Supervisor of the Town of Wilton, Mr. Arthur Johnson.
Thank you, Dudley, and members of the First Town Board. This is what you get 200 years later. I appreciate all the hard work and dedication you have put forth in the formation of our town. It's obvious today, in 2018, that 200 years ago, you all laid the groundwork and solid foundation for a town to grow and thrive. On behalf of my current Town Board, Town Staff, all the citizens of the Town of Wilton, a heartfelt thanks goes out to all of you for our founding fathers and all the citizens who lived in Wilton throughout the 200 years. With that, this meeting is adjourned. I want to sincerely thank Captain Giles Kelly's Company of Artillery for their performance tonight. It was tremendous. Thank you very much. And I also want to thank Cameron Strack James, who currently, who wrote the script for this one. I want to recognize our current Town officials who have taken what our forefathers created and continue to focus on today. That's Wilton's growth, safety, and prosperity. With us tonight is Deputy Supervisor John Lamb, Councilman John McHaker, Councilman Steve Stryker, Councilman Dave Bardsley, Our Town Director, Sue Baldwin, and our Highway Supervisor, Kurt Whitlock. Our Town Justices are here. The Attorney General Wirth, and the Attorney of Newington. A lot of hard work goes into this event and it would happen with our Vice and Tail Committee that was actually formed in 2016 and is still working through today. I want to recognize our Chairperson, Susan Gavin-Lance, Lily Baker, Bob Barrett, Kevin Campbell, Nancy Chyre, Susan Garrett, Larry Gordon, Janine Clubbittar, Mark Indu, John Lamb, Richard Purcell, Art historian, Gene Waters. Two other people at the end. One is my personal assistant at Town Hall, Nancy Riley. I've done so much putting this event together. I thank her sincerely. And of course, Fran Deeman, the Seton Network Saratoga. She's been great in working, directing the committee over the period. And she's been great in putting everything, everything together. Also, you know, events like this and all of our events takes a lot of money. And we've had a lot of generous sponsors contribute toward the event. And I want to recognize our major sponsors. First, Zerronic Trust Company. Scotty's Restaurant, the Grillo, New England. Dean Collins Construction Company. Richville Capital. Bondi Concrete. Pontiac Construction. NJ Engineering. Saratoga National Bank. Stonebridge Iron and Steel. Fine Affairs. The Wickerlands Country Club. The Wilton Mall. The Bothei Cinemas. And I also want to thank many other supporters that have given to our 200th anniversary. And a special thanks tonight to Mike Schaefer and his management team here at Wilton Mall for hosting tonight's event. From here, we will convene in the Bothei Cinema. If you need a ticket to enter, I think everybody's got it. If you haven't got one, I think there's some available over at the voting table over here. And that will start in about five to 10 minutes. So thank you very much for everyone coming. And we'll see you in the cinema. Thanks.